Call to order, the regular board meeting in West Valley School District. Of the third year, twenty twenty.
Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate any individual's statement unappropriate, including statements are out of order, too lengthy, breach personal privacy rights, are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum.
Thank you. If we stand up.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this fair, liberty, and justice world.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion? Now, what's in favor? The discussion. All those, all those opposed. The consent agenda has been approved unanimously. We'll go on to correspondence, guests, public participation. We have no other participation on the public signing sheet. I just got here, do I want to just say no? I don't plan on speaking. Do I want to just say?
Yes, I am.
On the yellow one, the guest room.
Yeah. It's a guest, but if you're not in the street, you don't. Just sign in. Okay. Um. We'll go on to the West Valley, their teachers organization report. Okay, thank you. Um. West Valley Teachers Organization report, what do you think? And when you teach in an organization. Well, we're chatting early for this. And the principal said, for any team of schools would like to report.
We're just, yeah, I mean, we've met quite a bit, we're planning for the new year, we've met with our district leadership team, so. That's been kind of exciting that we're bringing everybody together a little bit more, we created a theme for the school year, different activities and that kind of thing. And they'll be presenting at our open staff meeting. We've also met with our math initiative, maybe if you want to speak on that. One of the goals in our strategic plan is to increase the math scores and strengthen our math program, so we came together with middle school, elementary teachers that were interested in being on that committee or that had expertise in that area to kind of come up with a plan to analyze some of our data and work on, because we're moving our median percentages up so many points every year. We did that, we've been planning our new teacher orientation, that's next week for our private teachers and that's exciting. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to student placement report.
Starting with some facility stuff, so as you can see, we resealed the east parking lot, the back playground area that service road and the school basketball court, or the middle school basketball court. Painted the exterior of the building in various locations that needed touching up, Tony did that. Bridger, Tony and Phil made an office and Joel, in the small gym for Joel Hollis. They added electrical lighting and installed a built-in desk, put a window in the door. The conference room build is complete, so we took the two old principals' offices that were really, really small at the wall out of the middle, took the cabinets out and expanded it. It's got a TV in there too, so you can present during meetings, it's got a whiteboard, actually looks like a conference room, so it's pretty well done. We repaired the railing for the steps outside the cattle chute, because those were starting to get loose, so those were rewelded. We replaced the big exit doors that were in the big gym, those big blue ones, those are starting to kind of rust out and get pretty bad and think that might be why some of those were able to get in. But they look great, it took a long time to to put in there because they didn't come with the right install kit. Flooring in the elementary north wing, you know, when we went on our little tour, that way back in there, that tile is being replaced. The, they were gonna finish it today, but the glue that was sent in or whatever, this is incorrect, so they gotta wait a week for the glue to come, be shipped. So they'll be done with that next week and looks pretty nice up there, if you get a chance, you could, you know, mosey on down there, but it's a special kind of floor. Phil was saying it's like made for schools, like purposely for schools, it's a noise thing, which is good. And the whole goal is to do that entire hallway, second grade hallway down and eventually get it all redone because it started to kind of look pretty bad.
We don't have to cover this, but.
Yeah, right, yeah, we do cover it with rugs, like pretty much the whole thing.
It's not having those loose tiles though.
It's gonna be so nice. Yeah. It got to the point where you could literally just go down and pick up a tile. So. Anyway, we took the carpet out of the room in B two, just to kind of see what it would look like with the, just the concrete. Because the carpet is really, really hard for the custodians to go in and vacuum, just because of the nature of the carpet that was in there, and it looks great, it took a very long time to scrape the glue up and they had to use a lot of products and so the plan was to, you know, if that went really well, to do like, you know, half a dozen rooms each year until it was all non-carpit, but I think they might be able to do maybe one or two, so it's gonna take a little while to get it done, but it's worth it and I think it looks, I think it looks better, to be honest. So that's an ongoing project. And it's also a project that has such a small time window and it can lunchroom wall coating is, was not all of it, but areas of high use was repaired, not repaired, but replaced with showerboard and fiberglass so that it's easier to clean. Because it used to get so dirty and custodians would have to scrub for a long time, so showerboard will just be able to easily cleaned up. The insurance company inspected the building today, so we'll get that information on here pretty soon, doubt there was anything to make, but talk about that was done today, and we do get complimented all the time about our facilities, like, are actually maintained, so that's good. We are still looking for a district assistant secretary for the office, so far we have had no applications, so we have an ad in the newspaper, it's on the website, but alas, we still, still get crickets.
This will be full time, right?
It would be eight to one o'clock, so.
So good, but not, not.
No, quite full time.
And not quite half, but.
Yeah. Yeah. So we've got open houses coming up, September second for grades one through eight. Kindergarten will have its own open house until the fifth, that's where students can drop off supplies, meet their teacher, do bowl, and read. Let's see. Oh, we got news today, actually, it was the Northwest Mass meeting, where I got my new name tag, I don't know if anybody noticed. I've never had a name tag. Blocked answer, I know.
Hey.
Kind of nice. That accreditation will be delayed yet one more year, because they're still trying to figure out how to make it so that it's more efficient, and I talked to you guys about how hard the process is. It's really, really hurting single administrator districts, I know I couldn't, and it, it's an amazingly hard job, both of our principals didn't help out, like they did. And I did it by myself before and it wasn't very, you know, it's not nearly what it is now, it's really hard. So, long story short, we were chosen, was what they did, was they took the nine regions of Montana, split them up into thirds and did a cycle. So we were put right in the middle on those ends. So our next accreditation will not be until twenty twenty seven to twenty eighteen. So we won't be, it won't be due again until twenty twenty. But again, we did, we scored really, really well on accreditation. Like, just last year, just last year, Bill, yeah.
How many pages was that document again?
How many was it?
Remo paper.
Oh, it was a Remo, it was, what do you think, Alicia Nicole, is it? Four hundred.
It was in like different, it was like section A, section B, and you submitted each section.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the sections were really, really long, and so what they're trying to do is come up with a way for it to be a tiered system, like smaller districts would have a different accreditation requirement. Districts like us, I mean, okay, we still are the second largest K state, but we still have, you know, we have more resources, you know, and then you've got double A districts with even more of a staff that, you know. So which, we do have an advantage in that we don't have the high school accreditation attached to that, but still, it's, it's, it's enough. Also, the SAM organization is working with the Decentennial Study, which is where they look at how schools are funded every ten years. Right now, eighty-five percent, again, of our budget is based on our A and B, which is the number that gives me having the building. And then the rest comes from other sources, but they, they're seeing in Montana that enrollment is dropping. You know, in most areas, we're one of the only districts that has to worry about our enrollment. So we're a very unique school in that, in fact, we grew the second highest last year at a district in the state of Montana, not even accounting for her size, which is incredible. So our, so we're not really sure how this would affect West Valley, but they want to maybe look at the state, wants to look at it down to sixty percent in people and then base more of it on actually your quality educator count, so look at your teacher numbers more so than look at your student numbers. And the reason for that is because the situation, like what we have, you know, we have such a high number of students, but then that requires, you know, like us to have these classes where it's like, okay, it's a borderline grade level, do we add a teacher? And then we're adding all these teachers but not getting any more money for it. So they want to kind of find a middle ground with there to help districts, you know, kind of be able to juggle staffing. So, but it's a, it's a difficult, you know, it's a very difficult thing. None of this is, absolutely any of it is, is like for real, like going to happen, it's just kind of the discussion that that is, is being started and it's made up of people from all over the state and all, all the organizations, you know, the represent administrators, teachers and legislators as well, so there's several legislators on it.
That's a really huge change, if they could do that. It's just never made sense to me that you have accreditation, you can only have so many kids in a class. Right, so you spill over and then you have to break up and, you know, yeah, have a smaller class, but you have to pay for another teacher, but you don't get any funding to pay a teacher because you have the same number of kids.
Yep, that's exactly, so exactly like.
Yeah, if there's anything, as that moves along, if there's anything from a support standpoint, you guys need to let us know.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
How are we looking? I know that we had really been focused on trying to get our classroom sizes smaller to meet those things that we had talked about in the lectures.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, we're, we're actually looking, we, we do like to keep those class sizes down and we, the last enrollment, now we looked at we're, we're pretty, some of our classes are pretty high, like, I mean, I think our sixth grade is what is it, a hundred and twelve now or something like that, a hundred and fourteen?
So even with those new teachers that we added on?
It got pretty, yeah, numbers are creeping up again, some of those classes, like the, the fifth grade too, or just keep, keep getting, you know, good local district kids and enrollment, yeah, just, you know, and with all the buildings going on, you know. Yes, right off of the roundabout there, so I did go down to the city and that, I had a meeting with them about that and there's, they're pretty frustrated too, because the city can't really do much, you know, to say, you know, anything else and meets it, they just have to check the boxes, they have to go through it, but they didn't tell me. They summed up the meeting, they did say that they're gonna start partnering with districts in, in the valley to, you know, kind of see what we can, what we can do about it, it's just basically bottom line, something like that with adding thirty percent of that is these kids, what they say about roughly twenty-eight to thirty-two percent. So that's a lot of kids, you know, and if it does get done, we need it in school, there's no question, but so the Sterling development wants to donate five acres of land to us, or seven acres, I think, of, of that piece of property for a school. But we still have to go to school.
Yeah, the buildings.
And. Passing the bond is probably the hardest part of.
Yeah. I mean, really generous, but.
Right, exactly.
Hard to put funds for that building.
And it needs to be the right things, you can't just put school and.
Right, and, and the other piece to that too is, when you, when you look at it, then you're doubling, doubling, but you're paying a lot, you know, you're paying for two office staffs, at that point, you're paying for custodial at that, you know, so you're, you're really expanding and a bond doesn't give you more in your general fund either, so.
You got two electric bills too.
Two electric bills, two broke, two trash bills, you know, and like we pay thousands of dollars in trash for me, you know, so.
I think as we move towards that point, like on an equal path, we need to kind of consider like the pros cons of like a re-district, you know, of kind of the three mile, because the city is really expanding into our district.
Yes.
And it's, you know, this is a rural school and it might make sense to say, what could you, like even with that Starling, like a to-be constructed project.
Yeah.
To you know, carve that out before it floods, right? This floods us with students, instead of kind of shifting an existing boundary that has kids there and then you have, you know, something going on, but I'm not sure.
Has anything been formed with like the districts to actually meet to like look at this and look at us the valleys?
You know, they're actually, no, to be honest, but the state is really, in my opinion, looking at consolidation of districts. And so, you know, some of the things being put forth in the legislature about like how, you know, your K district has to be absorbed into your K twelve and I think, you know, some things like the Stars Act actually are gonna, you know, be more expensive for districts. So I think long term, if, and I could be totally wrong, but my guess is that we're gonna start seeing like districts like West Valley expand into like high left. I don't know that to be true, but there's been talk of that kind of a thing. I know many, many years ago, Cal and Trevor had talked about, I mean, some partnership with Bissell and West Valley, this kind of. So that's a really long way of saying, I don't know, but I, I don't, I really don't think any discussions have been made, in part because where, you know, we do redesign the boundaries or the district, you know, like to Calispel, for example, where do they go, where do those kids end up? You know, because they're, they're having overcrowding issues too and so.
I guess it's really, it's really bad, I think, just, you know, but it would be hard for Calispel to do a new school as well from the bond issue standpoint, it's just, the tax base is so much
Right.
larger that the feasibility of it is, is potentially higher than they could get past.
Right, and they do have land for the elementary. And they have land for any middle schools too, I believe, south of town. Again, you've got to pass a bond and have the money from your general fund because the bonds don't give you any extra bonds, you know.
It's so hard, I mean, because we need to keep developing, we need more housing. But at the same time, like there's no provision to help schools out with making sure that taxpayers aren't getting roundhouse taped in the face. And that we can keep growing and give kids what they need.
Yeah.
I can't, you know, they can keep pushing water and sewage out, so that, you know, and so the houses then kind of come, the new houses can have city water and sewage. But West Valley is, that's true, right, school.
And there's no like impact fees for school or anything that they pay for that subdivision.
No, there's nothing, no, no. So, yeah. Now, at one point, somebody said you gotta go to state that explains you to get any of that change.
Yeah, yeah.
But that never seems to get them anything back, never gets off the ground, it's not a popular topic.
No.
District consolidation has definitely, there's been a fair amount of rumblings and all that, but impact fees, not so much.
If we're the only district, why the only district is having a problem with increased enrollment? You can see what the legislature is and.
Yeah, there's two schools in the whole state.
But we were the second highest, I think there were more, but we were the second highest growing district in the whole state.
But there are a lot of districts that are.
Yeah, a lot of them, yeah.
When you get the east of the mountains, I'm sure a lot of them are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which was.
I don't remember, do you remember what it was? No, it could have been Belgrade, it could have been Belgrade, I think because a bee flashed in my brain.
But you're talking just the nominal number of students.
Right, not even.
From a percentage basis, I think they're the highest, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were what, eight percent?
Oh, I think it was eleven, something like that, I can't remember the number, but it was.
High.
It was high, we actually had to do a budget readjustment in the state, because, and they called us several times to check to see if our numbers were correct. Because they were like, we don't, we don't see this, like, are you sure these numbers are right? You're pulling it from our system, so no, they're real, all the kids are here.
Some stand in the line?
Yeah. Count.
Yeah, whenever school district five was here and had talked to us on that bond, I thought they said they were starting a study to look at the valley as a whole.
You, you, from a standpoint.
Did you say something like that?
Like enrollment and.
Yeah, enrollment and how like we're gonna tackle this as a whole with.
I, I would reach out to Matt, I could reach out to Matt.
Okay, I just thought they'd mention something.
Yeah, I don't remember that either, you know, but.
It might be worth reaching out to them just to see, because I thought they were gonna undergo like a study to look at every, you know, look at the valley.
Yeah, I think we need to, we really do, I think it's, it's definitely time.
But we're really gonna have to start getting proactive around that, so it's not gonna.
Well, we just can't wait till this subdivision built out and then we're like, now what?
Well, yeah, not like, no, so Mast is a mess, again, at the meeting today, it's being, the window is being kind of messed around with, because what they found was that there were four windows, with each like six weeks long or something like that, so in a thirty-six weeks, we already had twenty-four weeks of testing. And it's just a ridiculous amount of needless testing because the data doesn't mean much, so they're really trying to figure out how to interpret the data. Even talking with Tanya or Data Court, who doesn't really think it's a very, very useful exam, very, very useful test. So there are more to come on that, but there's a lot of, of people at OPI who know it. And so they're gonna look at adjusting some of the things with masks, so we'll check, we'll check into it and of course, Tanya will too, and the principals will. See what we have to do this year, but.
So the data is less useful than SARS was?
That's of, yeah, I think it is. But my personal opinion is, is they just really need to say, everybody knows it's a mess, okay, let's just get together, have a committee, take a year, it's set, and then come back, what, what's going on is they still want to do it and it's, it's like, okay, I'll, I mean. It was the first year, by the data even being counted, you know, so there, there was a lot to it, and so there's a, a committee looking at that, and we have a representative from Northwest Mass on that, that's looking at it, so. So that's gonna be helpful, but.
What is the other test that we do?
We do Ames Web.
Ames Web, okay, and are we getting useful?
I think so, I think Ames Web has been great, to be honest, we I, I, I would rather than just use our Ames Web data to, you know, to do that, because it kind of, I mean, it's reading math, it's kind of the same thing, I don't know why. This is personal again, I don't know why we put kids through so much testing, and, you know, we have that. Well, not all kids are tested a lot, but, you know, you do three, three times a year and, you know, based on the tier, then they test like every six weeks. So we have the data, you know, for that, so I don't know why that's not done, but. Well, that's another, I agree, I could go on for a long time of them. So this is definitely gonna be a year of board meeting policy discussion, because today the president of SAM handed out this at our meeting and it's the number of bills that the legislature, so last time we had to do this, and I remember that, we had thirty-six, so we had to do, and this time it will be thirty-nine. And that was a record year last time too, so just be, be ready for those to start showing up on agendas and I'm going to a workshop with other local superintendents in the valley next week, we're gonna kind of sit down and just hash out like what, you know, what, what the need is and what everybody needs to know and do, and kind of decide which ones, you know, will need more reading or whatever, and kind of do a combination, so it isn't where we have one meeting where it's just all really hard, difficult policy and really excited that our group is really, really close this year, so that's been really helpful. They, they actually, so a long story about MTSBA is that they took it, because Chris Goss left, and so what they did was they made this program possibility, I think, where you actually have to go in and do the things, so, so, yeah, with thought on that, we're, yeah, gonna have to figure out a different system and.
Are they charging us now?
No, I don't think so, but I'm going with, or I'm gonna go also a lot with Caliva and just let her, because what she'll do too is break it up between policy procedure and practice is what it is, and so.
That's what we talked to you super minutes about.
Yes.
They're all in the same.
They're all in the same fashion.
If they go.
Yep, and Caliva sent out a really good document just the other day, that's kind of similar to what Sam sent out, where it's just a workbook of each policy and, you know, differences and like from the old versus the new, so.
Yeah.
It'd be good, but just, I just wanted to make you guys aware that if we have thirty-nine and we have what, ten meetings, we're gonna have, gonna have a fee show up every, every year. We'll try to, we'll try to hammer it out.
But you'll know more after this meeting.
Yeah, 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 we're gonna meet, it's just not a formal meeting, just casual meet together.
We can't maybe develop, we can get together with all of us, and all of us have.
Yeah.
Maybe we can solidate our efforts and day or once.
Yes.
I mean.
Have a little co-op or something. So Marcus is here too, he's our new tech director, he's been doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job. I want to give him a big shout out. So he gave me a list, actually, just of all the things he's been working on, I'm gonna read it out to you, it's it's a small one, well, like, everything in it is really good quality, so he cleaned up the kindergarten wing up at the north end of the building, all the cabling, because there were so many unnecessary cables just sitting around and hanging out and the ceiling, and he tightened loads up a bunch and cleaned out any cables that we didn't need, so it looks, it looks a lot better up there, so that's where the flooring is going too, so it's nice facelift for that area. So he's looking at our E-rate discount correction and getting us a lot better deals on things and saving us thousands of dollars in certain subscriptions that we don't need because of his knowledge on things. And so just being inherently in it, he's really done a great job to stay with us, and cut me off too, Marcus, if you want to add or if you that's not true, I don't. Then he's in, increasing our bandwidth, it's for approximately nine hundred people, you know, we've got eight hundred plus kids and about a hundred staff. The minimum recommended speed is one megabits per user, which sets the baseline of one gigs, currently we are at five hundred megabits, so we or need at least double, would you say, Marcus, like, and then it leads though, coverage is two and a half?
Yeah.
Megabits?
We had optimal.
Yeah, we had. Yeah, so he's gonna get that done for us, and he's working with the company to make our connections better so that we can have access to that two point five gigs, and we'll have much, much better internet. So that's, that's really exciting. He's updating our phone system upgrade, our fax service and stuff like that, so that's been huge. So he put on there, the school relies on a single analog fax line, and so if we translate to e-fax, it's gonna be way better to you know, get everything done. He also found a way to make it so that we could have more than five phone calls in the school without one dropping, because at the, at the current moment, only five people can be using the phone or it just shuts off. Or it just shuts off, so, um, which has been frustrating, that's happened, and I've never known why until. Probably not the best, yeah.
Yeah, you could not down that. Let's say, this would be able to grab a line, because max in current uh phone calls is one in, one out per line. So that allows six calls up.
So now, you said it's like basically endless?
Yeah, uh, according to what they're sending me over, they said it summer with two billion per calls per line or something like that.
That's good enough for Maggie.
Bring it on.
So, anyway, yeah, and then, uh, just firewall replacement, um, automated student and staff rostering with a program that he brought over. New ticketing system for I T support, um, so, yeah, additional cost savings from. Bringing up certain things is between five and ten thousand dollars, and then, um, which is significant amount of money, and. Also, we're looking at replacing our security camera system that's extremely outdated, uh. Cool thing is we were getting bits, I think one was like eighty thousand, what did he say, wasn't it, Marcus?
Sixty.
Sixty. Yeah. Right, and then, so, based on his knowledge and ability to help with a connection he has throughout the technologies, they got another bid for sixteen-six. And then we applied for uh twelve thousand dollars round up for safety, apparently, so we could possibly get this entire place completely. Done for like four thousand bucks, four or five thousand bucks, so that would be huge, so. And our our system is is in desperate need of an upgrade, so there's lots of areas that you really can't see, and if you can't see it, it's. Not like, not really clear, and but it was a good system when it when it had its time. Um, that's all I have, so, we are still looking for an elementary parent.
Why elementary parent and then gallery?
Yep. Yes, yeah, super excited about that.
That's, that's uh probably one district in the state that does.
Right, oh, I know they just posted one today, a K M S, uh, first bed teacher, so. Yeah.
But but thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds like you've been thinking.
Yeah, it's been, been a lot going on.
And thanks to Marcus and and Maggie, I know Maggie's.
Oh, Maggie's been.
Right there.
Yeah, just amazing, she's really done it.
On Saturdays.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, honestly, no, she has been. Incredible, so. Again, we never say it to her face.
Thank you. So the next item is just the audit report, I think Richard spoke to that, um, but we didn't have the official report done, so we, that's just. There really isn't anything more, um, than what he spoke to it back in June. With the exception of, uh, we submitted our corrections and they were accepted with the um state, so. We don't have, we didn't have to resubmit any corrections again and again and again, like we did last year, so, um, but.
It was the highest audit, I know.
Unqualified.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apparently qualifying in an audit is valid.
Yeah.
You wanna be unqualified.
So basically, I just attached it, so it's uh yeah, on record.
Thank you, and Maggie has powers and hours of power to do that.
So do you think, like, with the progress you made coming up to, obviously, we're already done with this fiscal year? Do you think it's gonna be a smoother process for you?
Hundred percent, I I I, as I was working on gathering the information for for uh fiscal year twenty-four. I would already created a fiscal year twenty-five audit folder and started plugging things in, and so I'm actually. Um, we're gonna start our audit process probably next week, they already sent me the list, we're gonna do what, an early audit. Um, because they they said they have a window where they can do some audits early. And then they have to do the federal audits, which we don't need to do, and then ours would be at the end again, so I've got probably half. Mid over half of what we need for fis- ready for them already, um, a couple of things we did, uh. There in Black Mountain, there, we have the ability to scan in invoices. And that hadn't been used before, so like, one of the things they do is they send you a list of twenty-five to thirty invoices. One of them are major, anything over ten thousand, and then random minor ones, um, by doing this, like, we might be able to avoid. Even doing that portion of it, because we scan in all the documentation for each claim that we, or bill that we pay. So it's already in the system, so once they get the um cloud upload of our spread of our, um. Software, they should already have it, so there's like things like that that we've kind of changed, and, um, also, like, make copies of. Things as we were working, like, oh, they asked about this on the audit, so I just slid it into that audit file, and so I think we'll we'll just get it going and get it done. Early, so.
So now we go on to the action, I think, um, to the approval of bills, and, um, Maggie.
I do, I do. So, um, there's a couple of things, one, we have what was paid in June after the June meeting is the first group, and so like. Uh, pages one through four, there's a report, uh, one, two, and three, they show all the checks that were written for. The that ending period of June after the board meeting, on page four of four, um, it has. The funds where the money was pulled from, just a list of the funds and how much for each fund. Then I attached the activities that happened, uh, the activities check register that happened in the month of June. And that does have the little activities watermark on it, so it's very, you know, it was, it's easy to distinguish. And so those are all things that were paid in June from the student activities, and then if you go to the second to last page. You'll find our cash report, um, that we finished out the year with. And down at the bottom, I put, um, money that we were able to transfer from those funds. Listed below and the amounts into our interlocal, our one eighty-two, um, this was something that Richard and I, after we kind of. Before the um county's report gets done, because I, the the way the county does it is at some point between the. Probably the seventh through the fifteenth of the month is when I'll get their cash report, so that then I can balance our. Checkbook for the previous month, basically, the school checkbook, and so, um, Richard and I had to get together and look at. Our, what we had in in each fund, um, I looked at previous years, so I could predict like what taxes, what revenue might be coming in. Um, for the month of June, and then he and I came up with num- these numbers to transfer. From these funds into, um, our interlocal, so we transferred almost. Or just slightly over, um, five hundred thousand into our interlocal, and then, so those could be used, like. The two hundred thousand from the one sixty-one, which is our premise, our building re- reserve, will be able to use it. Start, start putting that away to use to replace the boilers, or if we, you know, start using it. If, you know, putting a ways for, um, potential building, adding on, or, you know, those kind of things, and so. Um, anyway, that's, so that's what we were able to do, and then, so each month I will give you. And this is from Black Mountain, and I will give you where we are each month, and then the last one attached to this. First report, uh, the June i- situation is what we actually, our budget versus actual report. So I kinda highlighted in blue, you know, once I go into budget prep, and once we pass our budget, I get to go into budget prep. Those highlighted ones and put them in there, so that we'll be able to tell what's been spent. You know, committed, we, the first column is that month, the second column is year to date. Um, and then that current appropriation is what I plug into budget prep, based on the passing of the budget. And then it tells me what's available, and it gives you a percentage of what was spent, uh, of what has been spent, and so that's how we finished out the year, right there.
This runs through the end of year.
Oh, it's the end of June, or the fiscal year, um, food service is a little bit harder, because that is not a budgeted. Um, that's why that's not highlighted, nor is miscellaneous, which is our. Like our grants, and, um, though, that's not, that's not a budgeted. Nor the uh, the one eighty-two, the interlocal, or that tr- the trust fund, which is. Right now, the only thing in that trust fund one is the Allison Fife Field Scholarship, that's, that's where you'd put something like that, so.
And that interlocal is all funds in the interlocal.
Right, not just ours, not just ours, yeah, so we just, as, we are now about five hundred, a little over five hundred thousand of that one million that's in there. So, but, um, and there's more on that to cut later on in the discussion here too, um, so anyway, so each, each. Month, I plan on printing this out as well, so that you guys can see where we are budget versus committed. So, but we we, now, if you go to the next little group, this is what checks that were written in July. One of two, um, the first page is the checks that were written in July, the second page is, um, the funds that they were drawn from. The third page is where we are at the end of July, July thirty-first, this is our cash report. I could not include the budget report, because we have to approve the budget in order for me to enter all those numbers in, but what I did do was it was. Um, print the Flathead County School stat, cash status. And to show you that we are now matched up with the county in all of our funds, there is. The the, there is a little exception, there is a little exception with those highlighted, and that was eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, because the work. Comp discount for second quarter, that ends June thirtieth, doesn't get applied till July second, and so it kinda screwed up some of the numbers, so basically what it does is it take. Puts money back into these funds from our our payroll fund, um, and so. I'm hoping to include this every month, the only thing is, is sometimes the way, like, if the second of, um. Wednesday of the month falls before they get it out, or get it, you know, before the county does, then I won't be able to include it that month, but. I'm, my goal is to also include this, so that you guys can see where we are with the county, because that's, that's huge, so.
Thank you for doing that, maybe.
I really like the the layout here, I think it gives a lot better kind of viewpoint to run into the bills.
Right.
We're able to kind of connect to the fund and the appropriation of the balance, so I think this is great.
So, um, the only thing, thank you, the only thing that the Flathead County doesn't have, which is I added the student activities at the bottom. So it's the only thing that they don't keep track of, so I did add that, so that you can see that, you know, the, our cash balance. Is three million five hundred sixteen, um, six ninety-eight fifty-two, and then. If you were to add our school activities, that's what it it is equal to that, so. Anyway, so that's the bills, so that's, that's my plan going forward and how I'm gonna present them, but those are, and then the other thing I'm going to do is just do. One month at a, I'm not gonna cross months, I'm gonna, so like, next month, we'll approve Augusts, and then, instead of. Doing, I was doing it up to two days, you know, up to the day the agenda was printed, but I'm just gonna do it month by month, to be just be very clear. So that, then I can, these reports will be a lot clearer as well, so.
You know, we we changed our meeting date to Wednesday, um, what would keep us from changing it to the third Wednesday versus the second? If that would help you with your account?
Um. I mean, I don't think there's anything.
It takes a couple holidays.
Yes, yeah, and that's fine, I I just think it might be a couple months where it might just, you just might get the report, the county report. I will do, you know, I'll, I will do the rest of it, but you might not get the county report until the following month, so.
I wouldn't change it for that.
Yeah.
Just, just a couple of months out of the whole year and we get it.
Versus having the.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much, Maggie.
Yeah, I really like the statement, Maggie.
Welcome in.
I like to be able to see the different accounts and funds.
I just really like the balances.
Yeah. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, all those in favor? I oppose. But we added some people. All right.
Um, I can speak to her Alexis, like, she seems pretty nice, uh, met her. Few times, she's been in setting up a room, she's a brand new teacher, uh, first year going into it, so. Her husband actually went to s- seventh, or went to school here, um, and was in seventh grade when the new building was. Being done, so. Not gonna do any math on that to figure out.
He's twenty-three years old.
Twenty-three. I'm twenty-nine.
Which anniversary?
So anyway, yeah, um, and then, yeah, you know, Marcia ended up moving into that other position, um, from the Flathead County. Yeah, yeah.
And because we had given them a letter of intent, and we approved them, um, at a board meeting, we had to just put them under their resignation, so.
We have all the teachers we need, we're just looking for some office right now, we have the fifth grade and everything.
Yep, we have no certified positions open at the moment.
Still early August.
Motion to approve the human resources personnel.
I'll second. Do you have any discussion? Okay, this has managed to just interpret the description, um, with the language needed for stars to science. We use the one, one zero F T for the business description, but.
Are you looking at the old?
I think you're on the old.
Yeah. I was panicking.
Out of district attendants.
We had a lot more applicants.
Yeah, yeah, as far as new, brand new students, asking to get in, yeah.
And we, we had to take a lot of them, right? Of our policy.
Well, we of the ones who had like been grandfathered in, yes, yeah, so.
How many, you?
Big twenty-one applied. Thirteen, we're in grade levels where our numbers weren't, um, high.
Okay, and that's, I mean, that's legislation.
It is, it's, yes, it's really only comes down to a numbers game, there's really no, I mean, as you can see, the names are blacked out. It's, yeah, so for us, it's simply, well, I mean, for everyone, it's simply a numbers game about the grade level. And so what it, what it is, is if it's in a grade level K five, that's eighty-five percent of accreditation limits. Set by the state, then we can't, and it's, it's five through eight, it's ninety percent. Isn't that right?
It definitely is ninety.
Yeah.
And because of, because of the school leg- or school choice legislation that passed, we have to take those children.
Correct.
Whether, okay.
Yes, and so. Yes, and so if they, and then they get, there's students with like siblings who get priority, and that's all done by the state. Or a parent or whatever.
So I think we had um, eighty-four, I think the, the. That eighty-four students for the returning um, out of district students.
Turning out of district.
Is that returning and grandfathered in or?
Just, yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's all just kids who are coming back.
Okay, and then thirteen.
No, we had twenty-three.
But, but thirteen are, yes, it's, yeah, thirteen acceptance, okay. Up, so it's ninety-seven.
They were, they happened to be in grade levels where our numbers were less than eighty-five percent or ninety.
So then how do we, I guess, what do we do if those numbers pop over?
Then we are out of accreditation, so.
And we still have to keep those, and we still have to.
Yes, 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 that's where, that's where it gets to be kind of that. That's what freaks us out to. We put it in a very bad.
So what are we?
Uh, so this is basically. Yeah, well, it's, it's, yeah, it's technically a board decision, you know, but it's, it's state pretty much kind of steers you into, into that.
And just where we liable for lawsuits and if we.
We're liable for lawsuits at all.
But I mean. Decide, you know, if we was like, they, I, classroom's too full and somebody wants to put a kid in there. So we're liable for lawsuits.
Yep.
If we don't, if the states is we have to. Well, even, yeah, there might be all kinds of mitigating circumstances, but you still.
Okay.
Yeah.
So eighty-seven of them are returning and we're adding an additional, how many do you say, thirteen? Because the class size is allowed those.
And, and, and maybe this is being, right?
So, for the next.
Yes, returning instantly, yes, yes.
So then next year, if those numbers are up, how do, like.
They have to reapply every year.
They have to reapply and then we could say no.
Correct.
If, okay.
Yep.
But half the time, I mean, we got that fifty-plus kids in August. For crying out loud, so.
I know. I know it's not, and kindergarten is where it's really, really hard because you never know how many teachers you're gonna need. We try to base it on a ten-year average, which, you know.
Yeah. There's some wild years in there, though.
There are, yeah, there are some wild years, and then we've got a class like second grade that's super low, you know, and then enrollment. So it's gonna be tough to staff that every year because it's gonna hit, you know, uh, grade level, so. So it's, it's a tough puzzle. It's an impossible puzzle, uh, and kindergarten is, is, is hard because we. Have to re- somehow find a way to reach those parents where it's their first kid in kinder, you know, because that's, they're not in our system and they don't know registration is due. They might not even be thinking about it. Um, I think it was twenty nineteen, we had eight or nine ki- kindergartners registered on the day before school started. So put us way over, you know, what we.
Right, so we keep those kindergarten classes around fourteen or?
Uh, you wanna keep them, they're accredited to twenty, but we like to keep them sixteen, seventeen, uh. But if you go again, if you go over twenty, then you're not credited from there, so. But that's a lot of kindergartners, you know, it's twenty, I had twenty-one when I taught kindergarten at Headings. A lot. A lot.
I think it's left well. I'll make a motion to improve the uh, out of district attendance agreements.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that?
Where are we at uh, as far as filling our classes? How close are we? Cause up here in other districts are full. Calispel and uh, the other side of the valley.
Yeah, Calispel is actually going through a process like where they're like overflow the certain schools because there's. Lot of kids being registered there too. I am mother-in-law's the enrollment because our there for, for elementary schools and talks about how nuts it is. Yeah, we're pretty close.
And they have to, like, I know whenever they do their application, we have some electric bill every year, like it used to just get rolled over.
It used to just roll over.
And it's not.
No, now you have to provide proof. Well, it's because now districts have to pay for that kid to go to the other district, so we don't charge tuitions up to the. So like when we, you know, say yes to a kid for Calispel, it's Calispel paying the bill for that. And so they have to prove essentially that, that they live because Calispel isn't gonna wanna pay for it if they're not in Calispel.
And that presents.
That's another.
Like, maybe, they have to determine what is.
Right, and so we, so before we um, sign sending, you know, it's called the District of Choice versus the District of Residence. And when, when we're the District of Residence, we have to sign off. So um, we are going to call those parents and ask them to give us, because we have to pay for that. So we wanna prove that they actually live in our district, so we have to call them and ask them to provide a, a utility bill from within the last three months, showing that address.
It's just so frustrating because it's like we ran this levy, you know, small class, like we wanna try to do small class sizes and when this legislation passes and.
See, our, our reputation of being a great school does hurt us in some cases because it's like, you know. We, and I hear it all the time, people who don't even know what I do, I hear it. You know, uh, when we were looking at houses a few years ago, we really didn't know what I did the first time you met her. He was like, well, you're gonna wanna try to get it, so I was just getting to, oh, what are you saying?
But we have, like, our overall percentage, we've, we've, we've had every classroom filled. There's no empty classroom.
Oh, no.
And then our overall, kind of overall, are we at like eighty-five or ninety percent?
Overall, that's tough because accreditation changes based on your grade level, so K two is twenty. And then it goes up to like twenty-eight or twenty. Yeah, tw- twenty-eight and, and then it goes up to thirty, that's five plus, five plus. We're probably like eighty. If you went all the way over like eighty-five percent, so yeah, we have eight hundred students, so really you could have. Like another hundred and twenty students. And you'd be the ma- if you perfectly fit up, then you could be, but that's really the growth capacity we have without. Well, and probably is our septic. As long as it's getting to its limit too, so that's why we say like adding on. Or something, it's pretty tough to do because we're, we're getting close to not being. And the compliance with, with the subject.
Subject was a sound circle, right?
Think so, I think it was about, Phil told me a while ago, but I think it's a thousand. We're at nine hundred plus people a day, and that's people, not kids, of course. Got nine hundred people a day. Yeah.
You know, seventy-seven.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they could just bring it on, but down. Bring it out down the line. So we just need the vote. Yeah.
Um, inter local agreement for the CSCP. There would be for us to pay CSCP for the shows.
Yeah, right, this is just a formality that we have to do. It's uh, CSCT is our in-house therapy. Provided through the Yellowstone Boys and Girls Club, so basically this just acknowledges that. Yeah, you know, they exist, they're legit, and we pay them for, you know, and we get reimbursed to, based on. And that, that process is quite, quite complicated, but um, they do provide a great service for our kids and. They can access a K eight.
They have an office in the school.
Yeah, yeah, they have to have. A place for group therapy and a place for private therapy, so they have what used to be the main office actually over in the. Um, elementary end of the building. That way they can have their separate sessions and things, and they have family therapy too, where families come in. Um, and they do run a summer program three days a week. You're there that kids, the kids come to through the summer and they do little trips and go, go around places, so.
And it's all billed through Medicaid, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the inter local agreement of CSCP.
Do you have any further discussion on that? I'll be honest. Hope so. Do you have any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Alright.
The inter open agreement, the side. Black Valley Multi-District Agreement, updated to include the new legislation guidelines.
So um, basically, we already have one that was in, in force, and it's the same schools. Um, but what happened at this legislation is, is where, as of right now, we are considered what they call the primary agency. So all the money comes here and then I cut the checks on the others, on behalf of the other schools. Legislation changed it that each school can still be part of this inter local. But that they ha- can house their own mon- fund one eighty-two, their own money. So they will no longer be sending it to us. We will no longer be issuing their checks. But the money is used the same way, so like if we transfer two hundred thousand to our inter local from our um, building reserve, it needs to be used on building reserve. Items, um, so that's how that works, and so we just had to update the language. Um, we're fortunate in the fact that we already have a fund one eighty-two, so we don't have to have you guys agree to start it, but all the other schools have to. Had their boards had to uh, approve. The starting of a fund one eighty-two and they have to go through that steps with OPI and county and all that stuff, so. So basically, that's all, the only thing it changed is just, we are no longer the primary agency, which. Answers your question on that, that million dollar, exactly, and all those large payments that were, we were doing on behalf of Marion last year when they were doing their um, portable classrooms. We no longer will have that, and I think this stems from, it just looks weird auditing and like you have to report it, OPI, you know, I had, there was a whole step in doing the. Um, TFS, you know, saying that we expended this money on behalf of Marion and I don't know what it looks like on their end, but I'm sure they have to say that, you know, West Valley. Expended this on, so it just, it's kind of eliminating that, so.
Thanks a lot, Sam.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the inter local agreement, West Side, Flathead Valley Multi-District Agreement.
I'll second. Do you have any discussion on that? Do you have all those in favor? I, I, I oppose. Unanimous. Hey, um, Marcus, maybe we'll find out the update, school security camera system.
I'm sure.
You, thank you.
Uh, yeah, so we're, we're working on uh, phase one of the security upgrades on the cameras, uh. We'll be replacing, I think there's thirty cameras in the school, a brand new system. At their current locations, uh, where they are right now. Uh, the new cameras are high resolution. They will provide a wider field of view, so you'll be able to see a little bit more. Still the limitation would be the fact that we don't have coverage in certain areas. So um, next year, phase two would be we apply for more funding. And that would be adding additional cameras, I'm calculating probably at least sixteen cameras, who would be to cover all, if it's not covered right now. Including a lot of the sides of the buildings. Us. The system that we're purchasing, you are uh, purchasing enough capacity to handle the additional cameras next year, so. It possible as well.
And absolutely, well, hopefully we get that money. To help us with that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I hope so, because we take it from that sixteen to, you know.
Make a motion to approve the upgrade of the school's security camera system.
Are we approving the expenditure?
Yes, because it's sixteen thousand, you know, six, I think it's sixteen thousand six, but we have applied for that grant. So we're going to get that, since it's over ten thousand.
And you guys are counting, you don't need to be like seventeen, so. Like shipping and handling or?
We'll take eight months.
Tariff.
I'll second.
Do you have any further discussion on the security camera system? Right, all those in favor? I oppose. Unanimous. The bank of confidence money. That's another one that.
Um, so one of the audit findings last year and. For a few years prior was that um, as it stands right now, we collect our money, uh, our lunch money through Infinite Campus. Which is, it's direct, directed into our student activities account. Because the county will not allow like individual deposits in it, like someone, a parent pays with a credit card. The, the county doesn't allow individual um, transactions. And so right now it's being funneled through our student activities, and what happens is, is. We receipted into our student activities with all the proper documentation. And then Shannon writes a check from student activities to the district, and then I receipt it into the district. So what the audit finding is, is that. It's going, it's being uh, counted as revenue in student activities and then expenditure. And then revenue again in district, and then we're expending it out. And so when I talked to the auditor, when we did our post-meeting, uh, we talked about if Black Mountain Student Activities had the ability to do a negative revenue. So instead of an expenditure out of student accounts, would that suffice? And she said it would, so then at my conference I was at this summer and I, in the Black Mountain portion. I asked them that and they said student activities is a very simple in and out. They don't have a negative re- revenue. So the workaround is to create a, a bank account that is totally for lunch money, it's still all being receiveded. Um, through Infinite Campus. But it's gonna be routed to this other bank account at Three Rivers. And then once a month, we will make from this account, make its deposit into our district account. So the only time it's actually receiveded into the. Software is at the end of the month, and then it gets deposited into the district once and then expended once. I ran it by the auditor to make sure that that was okay, because that was what the workaround that other di- multiple districts talked about at this Black Mountain meeting. And um, so before I put it on the agenda to make sure that, because what I need you guys to do is approve a second. Account, bank account with Three Rivers, just with the intention of bank, of lunch money only. So I made uh, made sure that I ran by the auditor and that she said that that would be acceptable. So that would get rid of one finding that has been showing up. Year after year.
Right.
We're not doing anything wrong, it just, the way the accounting system is, is it. Looks like we're receiving double and expending double. So it's inflating it basically.
So it's true.
Mm-hmm.
This is actually fair discussion.
Yes, yep, so she runs the reports and, and this will, you know, so any money that. Gets um, cash or check will also go into this account, so then just once a month, we get one check to the district, so it's very clean. The other thing that, sidebar, that it will help is that if a check does bounce. It's a lot easier to um, take care of it before it gets to the, the district in the county. Than it, it, to take care of it in this fund or into that bank account.
I'll make a motion to approve the bank account eventually. At Three Rivers, I think.
That's on Glacier.
No, they have all the other money. They have the county money. They have the big kitty. But I, I think what, I think what he's saying is that he can't second that.
I think you gotta like a toolkit that you get.
A toolkit? Thanks.
Yeah.
Proportionately, proportionally, if you look at what's in our district account, which is at Glacier Bank, I think you're, you're good with that.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Do you have those in favor of? The bank account that I'm signing, I. Okay, do you have more of? If Y twenty-five. And if Y twenty-six.
So um, the very last thing we have, page, what's listed down there is page four, forty-six through thirteen of forty-six. Is from uh, and um, from our TFS. Um, and what that is, is. Where our counts have ended, it's, it's the yellow pages, the ones with yellow on it. Um, basically, that is the first thing that I have to do is I have to say where our cash. Um, balances are, what we are. How we spend, spent our money, so it's multiple, multiple uploads. Um, to make sure that our expenditure lines, I mean, this is just how it all ends up, but it makes sure that our expenditure lines. Follow our, in accordance with OPI and how we spent our money. Um, so what you're seeing here is like general fund, our cash balance was six oh nine, nine seventy-two, thirty-five. Uh, we have tax receipt, taxes receivable. Uh, we have tax receipt, taxes receivable of one fifty one, nine eighty eight, eighty four. And twenty three ten, which is uh, protested taxes, and so it just lists our total assets, but it's actually line fifty two. Is the fund balance, the true fund balance um, for each of these. And so it just goes through our funds, and so basically I just wanted to give you a piece of, show you where things are. Where we ended, these ba- these balances should match the cash report that I already gave you earlier, the line fifty two, so. Um, if you look on uh, fund one fifteen, um, or actually it's just fifteen, sorry, on fifteen. Um, if you look at lines, uh, twenty three and twenty five. Those are currently um, listed as liabilities because those are those um. For the auditor, those are those I R S things that were getting cleared up, but they have to account for them, so anyway. So that's why that one, that's why that line fifty two is different than what I have on the cash balance report. Yeah, and we're, correct.
Twenty twenty one.
Yeah, yeah, so um. Yeah. So anyway, so so that's that's just the T F S, I just wanted to give you the snapshot of where we ended, so that's all done for the year. And we can submit that once we approve our budget, which is this page right here. And so um, for the budget, I went through and you know, the the six million ninety six thousand five hundred and twenty six. Dollars and ninety cents, that is from the O P I um, general fund, that the worksheet. That and that's what they said, that's our highest that we can do without a a levy and um. And we were able to pu- to put ten percent in reserves this year, so our reserves are all um. Back up to where they need to be with, I mean, transportation, we were only at nineteen twenty eight or nineteen point two eight percent, not twenty, so. That was not, I didn't get that point seven two done. Mm-hmm, yep, and and the other funds that were allowed to have a reserve, they're all back up with the exception of the. Transportation is point seven two. Just short of it. So, and then, thank you, and then this shows our mills of, and we're actually um. And it brings us to our ne- that we're living for, and it brings us to our next page, if you look at the historical data. Um, which is the very last thing that was in your packet, last year, we did, also our our taxation value. Believe it or not, we don't even went down just less than.
Went down.
Went down less than a thousand dollars, so it was very negative, so it really didn't change anything as far as our mills. Go, I I know it's crazy, but. I I know, so um, so last year, we we did a mills for um, a hundred and eleven point two seven mills. And this year we're doing ninety seven oh one, so every it, they should, everybody should see a decrease because the taxation value was. Change was so very little, the mill value will be very little, so um, part of that is out of the debt service, um. At at some point, I think because of the changeover. And part of that is including me last year, what what happens when you are working in O P I, um. And you're doing the budget, it it gives you like how much you can put in reserves. And I think what happened is is over time. We get that number, it's a red number down at the bottom and everyone kept saying, yep, let's put this in reserves because every other fund, that is your goal to do. And what happened is is we were putting way too many much in reserve for our um, our debt services. That and that's that very bottom line there, um, and I was working with um, Lacy Pervekio at Big Fork. A week ago Thursday, or just like it'll be a week tomorrow, and she and I were looking at this and all of a sudden like this light bulb, I'm like. I don't think we need that much money in reserves for our debt service cuz it's a, it's a. Uh, our bond just needs to be covered and our 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 interest, there's nothing else that comes out of that.
Yeah, and the only reason you'd have more is.
Right. Right.
Mill additional for just to cover like unpaid tax.
Exactly, and exactly, so historically, it's been about forty, and last year it was like three hundred and some, and so. We backed it down to one fifty so that you don't see a ginormous. Um, cut, which then next year people would see a big jump and that, cuz you do there, you want to balance a little bit of. Making sure that um, you're you can be almost as steady as possible for our taxpayers, and so. Richard and I spoke and we we agreed on the one, and I spoke with Lacey Novark at O P I, she worked with me on this as well, just to verify. What what Lacey Pervekio from Big Fork and I talked about, and then Richard and I settled on this one fifty for this year. And then that will be able to, we'll keep backing that down each year, especially if other funds have to, an increase, we can back it down. So that we can try to keep our mills very similar, similar to where they are. But as you'll see, you know, we're going from one eleven to ninety seven, so it's it's better for everybody, even just now as it is, so.
So yeah, like specifically debt service for your, so you had last three at twenty three mills and this year was um, nine.
Yeah, that's, and that is, that's the, that's the one that's making the difference and bringing everything down.
Then do you think next year it'll be back up to twenty threes?
No, no, we're, in fact, it'll be even lower next year, cuz we wanna get that, that target number is probably no more than forty. But if we went down to forty this year, it would be a huge decrease, but then I'd have to go back up the next year. No, I'm sorry, forty thousand in reserve, sorry, sorry, I was talking, I went to dollar, I supported. I went to dollar when I, I went to dollar amount, not mill, yeah, so um. Yeah, on the advice of uh, O P I, you know, and that way too, if any of these other. Permissive levy accounts need to be increased next year, we have wiggle room to keep pushing that back down to where we need it. And hope and with then seeing um, not, you know, so that our taxpayers aren't gonna see a huge increase. So it actually be less this year. So multiple wins, we got our, everything balanced, reserves met and mills are going down for the taxpayer, so.
So I guess I'm I'm still like just triple check on this debt service. So like, looking at your budget summary, you got, you know, we got, just use. Tuition, so we got two hundred, you know, that's roughly nine mills. That's two hundred and seventy thousand.
Oops.
Generate, and so then we got nine mills on the debt service fund, so presumably that's gonna be like two, two hundred and seventy thousand, but I think our. It's in our annual debt service, closer to like five hundred thousand.
So this is, this is exactly what we need with our debt service right here.
That is the five.
Yeah, yeah, that is exactly what we need.
But the nine mills aren't gonna cover that, cuz that's all.
No, it will, it will.
This is, there's a nine.
So.
Up there is like two. He's like two seventy, two sixty nine, right, like on intuition.
So I don't, this is O P I generated, so we plug in our numbers and it tells us what we have and what we need. So, and there is a reason why it's low, it it's not figured the same way because these are bonds. That are have been passed and and the money's already there, so I, so the one fifty is more of the. The eight point nine one is more of the reserve in this situation. Whereas up here, the nine forty two is this total amount right here for tuition. So it's two sixty nine at nine forty two, and we there, we are reappropriating. Uh, sixty two thousand in that account, so basically, it's two oh six at nine point four two. And and then the one fifty or one ninety five at um, eight point nine one, so.
I guess when I look at it, it, to me, it looks like next year, you're doing the eight point nine one cuz you're drawing down the reserve. Cover the five hundred thousand. And then next year, you're probably gonna have to increase it.
No, she actually said that it will, it will continue to go down, cuz like.
Well, unless you draw, unless you draw down that, cuz you said there's like three hundred thousand.
Our reserve was three hundred, yeah, our reserve, so we're 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 requesting less to keep the reserves, yeah, yeah. So like if we had gone down to forty, it would have been like three.
Yeah.
It would have been, like the overall would have been like eighty something and, but what would have happened was then the next year, we would have had to. Go back up, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, it makes sense with the reserve drawdown.
Yeah.
And you can't, can you make like extra payments, like say if you do have that fund there onto your debt service?
Nope.
Make a motion to approve this year twenty five T F S and this year twenty six budget. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Marcus.
Nice to meet you, Marcus. Me too.